Councilmember Dillon, Councilmember McClelland, Councilmember Turhar, Councilmember Seo, also City Manager Campbell, Clerk Royal, City Treasurer Bennett, Chief Rinnick, Deputy Treasurer McDonough, DPW Director Fordyce, Parks and Parks Director Scruggs, and City Labor Attorney, Mr. Gerard. All others, please sign in at the back. We have a few amendments for the agenda. We are adding, as we were informed by email from Clerk Royal, retiree healthcare. Mr. Gerard has some information that he will present to us. And there's also, we've received a memo from City Treasurer Bennett with an update on personal property, so we'll add that to the agenda as well. Are there any other amendments to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to ...
Move to approve as amended?
It's been moved by Dillon, seconded by Seo, to approve as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Campbell, would you like to start us off?
Apparently, computer problems are going to be the rule of the night or something. So, from the last time council met for kickoff the fiscal year 17 proposed budget work session, we went through, Mickey Joe and Joanne did a nice job presenting the budget. We talked about limitations, talked about our gap, causes of the gap. And so, we went, and there were some questions to follow up, and two of those that Mr. Har just mentioned about the retiree healthcare and personal property update. Those will be responded to here towards the end of the work session. So, but as we've done the last several years, as we affectionately refer to them as the big three, REC Center, DPW, and Police are essentially our three largest budgets. Come present to City Council to give a better, a little more in-depth understanding of the general overview that we provided at the kickoff meeting. So, opportunity for, to get a little deeper level of education, if you will, understanding of those three large budgets. So, we're thinking probably about 10 to 15 minutes tops for each department, so leaves time for questions, as well as potential discussion on the retiree healthcare and personal property update. So, unless, Mickey Joe, did you have any updates besides that? So, okay. All right, very good, then. Unless you have anything, I'll just turn over to, we have Public Works.
Thank you. I distributed our multi-year equipment purchase plan tonight on the table. Typically, this has been a five-year plan, looking forward to the next budget year and the next four after that. This one also includes some past history, the last three years of our current fiscal year and two years prior to that, of equipment purchases. These are pieces of equipment, generally what shows up on here are things over $10,000. This year, I had a number of sub $10,000, but substantial equipment purchases, so just for clarity, and to try to keep things all in one place, they're shown in the FY '17 column there, although they will show up in a different budget line than capital purchases. So, I thought I'd start with just going through the proposed equipment for the next budget year and give some explanation for those purchases. And also, in this, the way we're formatting it now, you can see some of the changes that we've made. So, there were the initial proposed purchases, and two of those are lined out that were either removed altogether, or, sorry, three of them are lined out, or changed to a different budget year after we had our department meetings and tried to reconcile the budget. So, the first item is a police detective vehicle, that's been removed. We do have a patrol car replacement. That was an item that was up for some debate. I pushed to keep that in there. We find, you know, when we get police vehicles beyond four years old, that they really begin to have, they're not reliable enough, basically, for police service. So, we're trying to not get into a situation where we are needing to purchase multiple vehicles in one year. We did, in a recent year, purchased two vehicles within one year due to one of the vehicles being totaled. So, this is, I've scheduled these over the next years to get that back onto a once-a-year purchase, pushing one of those vehicles a little bit longer than one, perhaps placed just a little bit early, but we'll find another use for that in the fleet in a less critical role. One of the, the next item on here is a small bucket truck. This is a vehicle that we use to work from an elevated position. We currently have a large bucket truck, but what we're finding is that it has a very long boom, and when we're doing roadside work, that it's impractical, because the boom will swing out into the lane of traffic. And with the addition of multiple new streetlights on the Michigan Avenue project that we're going to need to maintain, and additional banner brackets, locations for flags, we felt it necessary to have a second lift truck of a much smaller scale that'll allow us to work alongside Michigan Avenue without having to close multiple lanes of traffic. The next item is a pickup truck. This one has been moved to FY '18. Again, this is an effort to maintain kind of a maximum age within the fleet. We keep our pickup trucks typically 12 years maximum is our target. That's a lot longer than many agencies keep theirs, but that's a number that works for us. So, this is a 99. It's well beyond 12 years, but it's, just to help things balance out here, we've moved that to the next year, and we'll continue with that pickup truck replacement program to keep, try to get to that 12-year maximum. The next piece is a piece of primarily snow removal equipment. We have one small unit, it's called a Steiner, that we use along the cemetery downtown streets. We need, we need one small, highly maneuverable sidewalk, snow piece of equipment. And the one that we're looking at also, excuse me, is available with multiple attachments, and one of them, we believe, will help with mowing at the cemetery. One of the problems we have in the cemetery right now is our side discharge mowers will, in certain tight areas, they'll kind of plaster headstones with discharged grass. This is a more of a finish mower, a rear discharge mower, that we think we'll be able to use in those areas and minimize that plastering of the headstones. Next proposed item is to replace our 1974 tractor. We utilize this in maintaining roadside ditches and shoulders, which we don't have a lot of in Saline, because we're mostly curb and gutter, but we do have some of those. And then also, in leaf pickup and our vacant industrial lots, when those need to be mowed, we utilize this. And currently, with the size of the tractor and the size of the brush hog that we have for it, it takes us sometimes a solid two weeks, just to mow our, one person, two weeks to mow our industrial lots and keep those maintained. So, we're looking to speed that up quite a bit with this purchase. Another purchase on here that's a result of the Michigan Avenue Reconstruction Project is an additional arrowboard. This is a traffic control device, and we have one in our fleet right now. You know, it has a changeable arrow message. It can, it basically tells people to turn left, or right, or stop. And to maintain the new landscape islands on Michigan Avenue, we're going to need the ability to close two lanes. We need to change, we need to close a lane on both sides of those islands while we're working in them. So, that's the additional arrowboard. We've got a landscape trailer, that's just a replacement of an older piece that's just about rusted out. We have another snowplow truck rehabilitation. We did one of these three years ago. This one's a little bit lighter. We're replacing the valving and the lines that control the plow and the spreader, and also, we'll sandblast and repaint the dump body on there. Next item is a small salt insert. This, you'll see parking lot maintenance landscape contractors with this scale of equipment. This is one that's been deferred, but hope to get one of those in the next budget year to improve our cemetery drive maintenance and parking lot maintenance. Right now, we're spreading salt in the wintertime with our full-scale road trucks, and some of those, you know, they don't fit in the parking lots very well, and we're a little bit limited in how we can spread salt with those, so we're hoping that a smaller-scale insert that we put into our one-ton dump truck would allow us to keep those parking lots in better condition in the wintertime. And then, another old piece in 1983, right now, it's, we have a, this old truck is pretty much dedicated to chipper and leaf collection service. We would get rid of that old truck and buy an insert for one of our newer dump trucks that would serve as a chipper, so when we're doing tree maintenance, this is how we collect the chips. And it's also, we use it during fall leaf collection with our leaf vacuum. It needs a special body to go into and contain those leaves and control the dust. So, those are the proposed, and a couple of deferred equipment purchases. If you want to do questions on those right now, if anybody has.
Ms. Dillon, would you like to start?
Sure. I just have a couple of quick questions. What's the average number of miles on police cars when we retire?
They're typically over 100,000. Yeah, right tight to about 100,000.
And do you know what the estimated cost is in Chief Mike Evans' deinstalling all the police gear out of them?
They don't typically mark that, choosing, I think the last time that I saw them actually just do a decommission.
And the equipment we have would just be transferred? We're not going to have to buy new equipment?
Not necessarily. They raise the price of topples significantly, so we're looking at their options, of course, the topple could, we'll have to.
Most of the equipment removal, we do in-house. The installation of, on a new vehicle has been contracted out in recent years. And, you know, when it was a Crown Vic, every year, it was great. We could take equipment off of old ones and move it on to new vehicles. With the frequency of model year changes now, there's fewer and fewer opportunities for that.
Is there any resale value to it, once the equipment comes out?
There is, yeah.
Yes.
I've been signaled.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry. Just for clarification, what is the Steiner, is that the thing that has the little brush in the front of it?
It has a couple of different attachments. Most often, we use it with the brush in front, yeah.
Okay. Oh, the arrowboard, is it just arrows, or is it words also?
It's just arrows, yeah.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Ms. McClelland?
I think Janet covered mine.
Mr. Seo? Oops. No? Mr. Seo?
I have no questions.
Okay. I have one, looking ahead. The next two years look quite a bit more expensive. Do you have any, anything you'd like to share about that?
Certainly FY '19, we have one vehicle replacement in there that's $450,000. That's our Vector, Vector's a brand name. It's our sewer jet and our vacuum excavation tool. And that, we've had this one, our current one is a 2006, and we had one prior to that, and it's really become an integral part of our operation. We absolutely need a sewer jet to maintain the sanitary sewers, keep those in good operating condition, and avoid backups. And the ability to vacuum excavate is, there's really almost no way to get away without that capability, because there's so many things buried underground now. We've got old gas mains, new gas mains, there's electrical wires, and cable TV and fiber optics running everywhere. And, you know, to not be able to explore in a non-destructive manner is dangerous and expensive. So, that, and the cost of those types of units has gone up dramatically. So...
They could change up, the department could change up.
But because it is such a critical piece of equipment, it's not one that I feel very comfortable kind of pushing to its limits. We've had a couple of pieces on it wear out, and I've done some maintenance, and we've had some very successful warranty replacement parts on it. But because it's kind of a mission-critical, it's one that I'd like to keep a little bit on the newer side and dispose of this one while it has significant resale value. And then, for FY '18, a couple of expensive pieces of equipment. There are another plow truck for $185,000. Again, you know, same logic. We do have four plow trucks, but, you know, when they're needed, they're really needed. And until our new one comes in this spring, you know, our average plow truck age is over 20 years. So, that's a, you know, an ongoing effort to keep that fleet on the road. And then also, I talked about the lift truck, the aerial bucket truck earlier. The large one that we currently have is a 1986, it's 30 years old, so looking to replace that with a used one next year, next, next year.
Yeah, if I could, just, certainly, that's, I mean, we budget, and you multi-year budgets, so, you know, we evaluate them each every year, and we update them, and so, you know, maybe we can, depending on, you know, what our, what the CPI is next year, for instance, what kind of development we get, so we'll evaluate those as we go forward, and so, you know, this list may change or may not, but it just, so we'll just wait and see.
Yeah. Yeah, actually, the large bucket truck is a good example of that. There was a time where that was kind of one of our urgent equipment purchases, but we, basically, just because of its age, but we took it to a specialist and had it gone over thoroughly and re-certified, and, you know, felt comfortable with it for another couple of years.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Gilbert? Okay. Then, unless you have anything else?
If I have just a couple more minutes, a couple of general fund budget highlights. The roof of our salt barn is, has been repaired a couple of times, and I've included money in this budget to fully replace it. It's a, you know, it's a fabric structure. Those have a limited life expectancy. I think it's 12, 10 or 12 years old, and it's had some wind damage in a couple of our wind storms. It's, it has a tear in one area that's been repaired, so I feel that that's time to replace that before it's not serviceable. And then, in the stormwater budget, we are currently going through our stormwater permit renewal process with the state. It's a very long process. I submitted a, an application and an updated stormwater control plan, I don't know, eight months ago, I think, we're still in process. I'm anticipating that when the state completes their review, that they're going to put some additional requirements on us, and we'll have to revise that plan and come up with some, some new procedures, so I've included some professional service money in the stormwater budget to assist with that.
Any questions for Mr. Fordes about those two items?
I'm sorry, which fiscal year, is it, are they in the stock?
The one we're working on, yeah, FY '17.
Yeah. Mr. Gilbert?
My question, and this was something I'd asked at the last meeting, was the idea, and this may have been discussed, we bought all this equipment to repair the road so far, and, you know, some of that patching, do you have kind of an idea what a dollar figure, or whatever we've managed to offset that cost, or how that's benefiting us at this point in time?
I don't have a dollar figure, but certainly, those two specific pieces of equipment for road repair, the small asphalt mill and what we call the hot box, have definitely allowed us to do larger patches than we have in the past. Prior to those, we were in-house, pretty much limited to pothole patching. So, with these, we've done a couple of significant repairs on Maple Road and Russell Street and Colony and Henry, so that they really have expanded. Now, not that we've made a dent in, in things that need to be done, there's certainly more opportunities out there to utilize this equipment. But those repairs are all things that previously would have to have been contracted out. And, you know, so now, we're able to do those in-house. Some of them, maybe we got a little over ambitious. I think the Russell Street, some of those were too large to do without full-scale paving equipment, but it, yeah, so they have improved our capabilities, you know, I can't, but I haven't quantified it in terms of dollars.
Were there any trade-offs? I mean, I know we had, we've hired some new additional staff and so forth, but finding priorities, because I know we had a lot of water main breaks and everything last year and this year.
Yep.
Do we anticipate any additional patches happening more this year than next year, or than last year? I don't know what more water main breaks we may have, but I know with 12...
Right, yeah. The US 12 and the water main and sanitary sewer replacements that are taking there, taking place there are going to take a fair amount of DPW staff time inspecting those and making sure everything's correct, and doing utility locates, and, you know, when we, when the contractor comes through and uncovers something unknown, you know, we're going to have to identify that. So, that's going to take up a lot of our department's time this, this construction season. So, I don't see an increase in the amount of patching that we'll be able to do this year. I think, hopefully, we'll hold steady and get some more significant patches out there. And I want to work more on rather large-scale patches, what I would call like annoying patches, you know, where there's like one pavement seam that's kind of falling apart and creates...
Like South Indian Harbor Street, an example.
Yeah.
Pleasant Ridge, as you drive up the hill, there's a regular seam that's on the veil that's going to patch so many times.
Yeah, yeah.
That's an example.
Those are, yeah, that, much more that scale, you know, they're longer, but they're narrower, and we can, actually, we hit those at the right time, we could preserve the rest of the pavement, could add quite a few years to it.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Mr. Fordes? Finished?
Yep.
Okay.
I don't have any fancy handouts. No PowerPoint, sorry. I wanted to, I guess, start with kind of looking at our revenue goals for next year, and then also kind of throw in some current year, how we're doing and whatnot. Can everyone hear me all right? So, I guess, starting at the top of our budget, it's a, it starts with our administration, which includes our membership, daily fees, general things like building rentals, park rentals, and court rental, just kind of things relating to the facility. And next year, our, our revenue goal is to increase our memberships by 5%, which is a $30,000 increase. And I actually, over the weekend, got our March report, and we're actually on track to be where we expect to be next year at this time. So, we might have to amend that for the better, which is, which is the good news. Our daily fees, though, if you would take a look at that on your sheet, if you have that, or maybe not, we're actually, we've been decreasing somewhat with our daily fees, and we attribute that to, number one, when we made some adjustments a few years ago, we decreased the youth, youth fee, well, actually, we changed the ages for our youth. We made it up to 17, and we decreased it from $8 to $5. So, we're still getting the numbers in, but we're generating less revenue, and more people are buying memberships. So, it's actually a nice trade-off. We'd rather have those members than kind of the hit or miss, whether they buy a daily fee or not. The, our building rentals, we're actually, next year, we're, we've, we've secured some kind of guaranteed building rentals. We have a couple of groups that are doing lock-ins, and so, we know that our revenue is going to be increasing for our building rentals, but in fact, currently, we're already, we've already exceeded what we had anticipated for this fiscal year. It seems like, right now, and I'm not sure exactly what it is, whether we've been advertising a little bit better, or getting a lot more repeat customers, but our, our facility rentals have, have increased fairly significantly. And that kind of goes along with another thing that we have is our birthday party program. It's not necessarily a facility rental, but we're, you know, using the cabana for the birthday parties, and that in itself has, we've exceeded where we're supposed to be this fiscal year, which is great, but, and I'll touch on this in a minute, but we're kind of rethinking, relooking at that whole program in itself. I have a different staff person that is, is in charge of that program, who has some really dynamic ideas of how we can kind of take that to a whole new level. And so, I would, I would have you keep your eye on that, that for next year, that we're going to really kind of raise the bar on our, on our birthday party program, which should be a significant revenue source for us. This year, we've actually been really fortunate to receive quite a few grants. The Rec on the Go, or I'm sorry, the Healthy Endowment Grant, Healthy Communities Endowment Grant, which was a two-year program. Last year, we received money. This year, we're receiving the second part of that, but that's for our Rec on the Go and Family Fitness. So, that's a $22,000 grant that, that we've received. The Building Healthy Communities, which we just brought to council and made you aware of that last month, that's a $22,000, an additional grant that we're going to be receiving from the state. Also, CARES has approved a couple of things for us, $10,000 for Brecken Park play equipment, $8,025 for the Salt Springs Park Improvement Program, or Improvement. And also, we're still waiting to hear about the Judy Ivan, but we've requested $5,000 for, for the Brecken Park play equipment for that. So, actually, this, this year and going forward, we're, we've been doing very well with obtaining grants and receiving them. Kind of a summary of our programs, leagues seem to be transitioning somewhat. Softball, basketball is pretty consistent, and as it has been for, for quite a few years, but racquetball, volleyball, and dodgeball seem to be taking a dip, and it's, things happen like that, it's cyclical. All of a sudden, that'll kind of change, and those will be good, and then softball declines a little bit. So, it's all... will be good, and then softball declines a little bit, so it, it's all, it's all part of, you know, the trends and whatnot. And also, I wanted to mention our flag football program that we started a couple of years ago, is doing very well, and it, this is a program we work with Celine Community Education on, and we've grown that program very, very well, and, and that seems to be on the rise. Regarding classes, those seem to be remaining steady. Our personal training, our aquatic training classes are on the rise. Personal training is, is up, actually, this fiscal year, more than $8,000 from last year at this time. And our swim lessons, actually, I'm, I'm happy to report, are, are growing. You know, we, for the longest time, we were the only game in Washtenaw County, and now there's quite a few private facilities that offer swim lessons, and we kind of took a dip a, a few years ago, and we're steadily climbing back up. Our, my aquatics coordinator, Stephanie Ferguson, has done a tremendous job in training our staff, and, and getting people in, and we have a lot of re, people that come back over and over for our lessons, so that's, that's a good thing to report. And then our special events, very happy to report that we're exceeding our budget on, on all of those items. Our community events, meaning it's, you know, our, our Spring Fest, our Halloween parties, our daddy-daughter dances, mom-to-mom sales, and so on and so forth, so those are, those are all selling out, we're doing a great job with that. I know, I wanted to mention briefly, we had a staffing change occur in March, and with our facility manager position, and we've taken that opportunity as a staff to kind of rework who's doing what, and trying to figure out how we can maybe boost what we're doing, and, and be more efficient, and I give a lot of credit to my staff, they are very enthusiastic, and, and trying to make some really good positive changes. And I think we've, we've switched some responsibilities around that, that are gonna be really good. Just for one example, Stephanie, who is my aquatics director, she's very much, she's, she's gonna be in charge of our birthday party program, which makes total sense, because most of the parties are pool parties. And she's very creative, and has some really good, good ideas to kind of boost that, that whole program. We've made a few other changes, Sunshine is gonna be responsible for our Kids Corner program, which is, is good, but I think she has sights to, to make it even better, so we're really excited about that. And we're still transitioning, and, and you know, always kind of changing and tweaking, but, but I think things are going very well. I wanted to mention quickly our 25th anniversary, which everyone is invited to, in fact, we, we need you there on June 12th, from one, you don't have to be there the whole time, but from one to four is the event. The Rec Center is gonna be open that day from six to 11, just normal times, but we're gonna, we're gonna close down at 11 o'clock, so that we can prepare for, for the big event. And at 1:00, we're gonna have a, a nice, hopefully the weather's gonna be good, nice ceremony, a couple of speeches, and whatnot, out in front, open the doors, invite all the masses of people in, so that they can enjoy, we're gonna have the firefighters cooking hot dogs for us, we're gonna have some fitness classes, indoors and outdoors, the bouncers are gonna be up, 212 is helping us out, they're gonna do some face painting, and balloon animals, and sidewalk chalk stuff, Magic Joe is gonna be there, doing some strolling magic and whatnot. So we have a lot of things that are gonna be fun and exciting, and, and we, we definitely want all of you there at that. Then, moving on to something not so great, the, our, on March 17th, which was St. Patrick's Day, we had some very, very high winds in, in, and around Celine, and for some reason, not sure exactly what happened, but our roof is kind of doing some weird things, kind of, we, we discovered some banging in the, in the pool area, one of my lifeguards reported it, and like, we don't know what it is, we went in there, well, sure enough, the roof was kind of raising up from the winds, and it broke a pipe, and it's like a PVC elbow that was in our pool area, and it was, it was from the winds, it just kept raising up and down. My maintenance guy went up and investigated, and almost got thrown off the roof, not that bad, but it was very, he should not have been up there, and I told him not to go up there again, because it, it was extremely dangerous. So he got in contact with Royal Roofing, which is a company that had installed our roof, and they ended up placing three pallets full of sandbags, kind of placing it all over the roof to, to keep that and secure it, which is where we're, we're at today. We have Jim Smith, who is a roof consultant, who is actually, it took a long time to get him to, to get him to come out here, but he's gonna be here this week on the 21st at 10:30 to do a investigation, and, and kind of give us some, you know, what, what we need to do, and, and how we need to repair this. So I don't know any, anything other than that, any, you know, exact numbers, and what, what the cost is to repair, but we will have that soon. And then, quickly, regarding like our, our capital improvements, we have several things on the docket for this upcoming year, regarding our building, ADA door openers, which we do have a $5,000 CARES grant to help subsidize that, but we had put in for $13,850. Essentially, it's putting ADA electric door openers on seven doors. The pool hallway, we need two, the men's and women's locker rooms, two each, and then in the family locker room, just that main door to open that. But I think that would be a, a real great improvement for our customers with mobility issues, or that have devices, or just need some assistance in, in getting those doors open. Also, exterior block cleaning and sealing of the, of the outdoor block, that has to be done every five to, five to seven years, and it's, we're at our max, we need to get that taken care of. The Phase Two of our parking lot, as you recall, last, or this fiscal year, we, we did Phase One, which was from the driveways in front of the building to the, to the north parking lot, and then Phase Two is actually, starting right there, which is near the, the pool area, to the farthest south driveway. So it's, it's actually broken up into three different phases. Then the third phase, which would come in a future year, would be like the softball parking lot area. And that's for $89,150. And then, replacing our pool exit doors, we have double doors, they're glass doors, and a single door, and just from over the years, they're 25 years old, but they've gotten a lot of corrosion, and, and there's new doors that are more energy efficient and weather efficient, so those are in need of replacement. Then that's for $6,930. And then, sink and countertop replacement for $12,000, and that's just to go through all the bathrooms and locker rooms to replace all the existing, it's not Formica, yeah, I guess it is Formica, the, the counters, they're starting to get a lot of wear and tear, and, and water issues, you know, swelling and whatnot. And then also, the VAV, the Variable Activator something or others, it's a, I should know what VAV is, I'm sorry. Variable air valve, thank you. They're controllers for, like all the heating and cooling in the building, there's, there's these controllers, there's 13 of them throughout the building, and quite a few are not functional, which means that our airflow and return air is not working the, the way it should be. So there's a, we got a quote from Siemens, it's, it's $5,655 to, to go in and, and replace and repair all of those VAV controllers. And then the other part, that was building, and then in the pool area, $52,100 for resurfacing the pool deck, and $5,000 to finish the conversion of the lights from the metal halide to the LED lights. And actually, that one could actually be reduced, we're testing out a new bulb that is almost half the price of what, what we had originally tried. They, they have a new one, and we, we're testing one out in the, in the gym right now to see how it works, and it's a, it's a conversion kit, so we don't have to change the whole high bay unit, we just change the actual bulb. So it could be a cost savings there. And that's kind of the long and short of, kind of executive summary of, of what the budget's looking like, and be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Seal? Ms. Dillon?
Um, just really quickly, um, on the Phase Two of the parking lot, is there an opportunity to work it with another project, like we did with Phase One?
Possibly, yet to be determined.
Okay.
Just like last year was.
Right. And just, the variable air valves, are those sensors, or are they controls?
They're controllers.
Okay.
Thank you. They're little boxes that are up in the ceilings.
Thank you.
Ms. McClellan?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Mr. Gierbach?
You've mentioned some of it, but just general, what do you see for the trends for revenue, operational revenue, not with, including grants? Do you see us staying steady, or increasing?
I do, I, actually, I see us increasing slightly with, like, with our memberships. Leagues are kind of holding their own. Our community events, definitely, we're seeing an increase there, and our classes are, are kind of holding, holding their own.
Okay, then-
And, and by the way, the classes, they're holding their own very well, even though we have, a majority of them are, are free with the membership, so we're still bringing people in to, to purchase those classes, and even though they're not members, they, they are continuing to buy like a Pilates class, or a yoga class, and we have some other premium classes that we, that are for extra charge.
And then generally, for contribution towards operations, you see no negative for next year? We still need to transfer in the funds that, that we've been contributing?
Yes, I would say so.
That's primarily for the capital? Thank you.
Anything to add? Carol?
I have one last question, I'm sorry. The elephant in the room, the roof, do we think that that is gonna be covered by insurance? Are we looking at full roof replacement? Is it a repair? Because it's already been repaired previously, correct?
Same, same response, yet to be determined. Well, because our roof expert is not, so this, later, as Carl mentioned, will be out there to take a look, and hopefully help us understand the cause of it. It's kind of like a, I think it was like a sandwich, or several layers, and they come apart, so at least that's, that's what happened, what, three years ago, when, or so, when it, when it last came apart, so we will, we will see.
Okay.
Is it the same location?
Yes, similar, similar locations.
Similar location. Thank you, that's all.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Scruggs. Chief Rennick?
As far as our '17 budget, as you can tell, I'm a little basie today because of whatever's going around to everybody, and it's, it's gonna be roughly the same as this year, the, just the day-to-day operations. We really only have two big items that I think you need to be aware of. Mr. Fuentes has mentioned one being the patrol car, roughly about $36,000, $37,000. And then the second big item, Sergeant Bassel is here tonight, and he has certainly put a lot of work into this, and he put together a PowerPoint for you, so if you would, if you pay attention to the, to the screen, Sergeant Bassel, why don't you go ahead and take over?
As well, so you can doodle, draw, or take your notes. So as you're aware, over the past few years, our, our dispatch center's kind of been a focal point on, on the Police Department. Over the past couple of years, I've kind of worked to try to maintain and to continue our dispatch in proper and good, good working order with, with the facilities we have. So I should start off with a little bit of the history of the Police Department and this building. I mean, everybody knows the building's been built since 2002. At that time, our dispatch center basically consisted of a, of a desktop computer and a monitor. We had the security camera monitors, the voice recorder, some of the typical parts that came over from our old building were brought over into this building, Councilman's Seal can probably be pretty familiar with that, because he was here during that process. In 2006, the Police Department went to Clemis CAD, which is Computer Aided Dispatch, and with that, increased our technology and, and what we have in our dispatch centers. But since, since 2006, with the increasing technologies, just like turning over very rapidly, I can, my label is like Band-Aid fixes, cheap, good fixes, they were good fixes for the time, but the technology has continued to increase, so a change is, is needed. So I, it basically shows, this is our, our dispatch center, we have two consoles, oop, I was a little quick on the button there. We have a primary position and a secondary position. In our primary position, that consists currently of three computer towers, the regular desktop towers that sit underneath the cabinets. We have seven total monitors in that one dispatch position. Four of them are CAD, one's a radio workstation, one's the security building cameras, and the other one is the city desktop computer. And there's two printers in our dispatch center, one's specific for Clemis CAD, and the other is the, the Police Department printer and fax machine for our dispatchers. There's three radios that are there in the primary dispatch center. One is a primary workstation, which adds to the monitor, which you can see right here, that's the, the radio console. Then we have a consulate, and the consulate is actually a black box that's behind this monitor here on the right-hand corner, it sits back there, you'll see it more on the next slide. And that consulate's an encrypted consulate that's installed to assist the Washtenaw County with being able to monitor encrypted radio conversations. And then there's a portable that sits back here in a charging dock, and that is for the dispatcher to be able to be mobile with the radio, in case they do have to leave the center for a second to go into the secretary's office, so we maintain a portable in our dispatch center as well. And then there's two telephones in that primary dispatch center, a 911 and an administrative So this is our backup, this is our backup position, this is that black consulate encrypted that I was talking to you about, it's this one right here on the side. That backup consists of a computer tower, four monitors, which are CAD, two radio systems, there's the consulate, which is this gray box back here in this corner here, that's the main radio for the backup position, as well as a, a control station, and that is this little box right here, that's actually a low band on our backup DPW channel, and that radio is also used for the weather when we set off our emergency sirens uptown, because we still maintain and have the ability to set off our emergency siren, which is up behind Union School. Again, there's two telephones, a 911, and an administrative line, and then on the back wall of our dispatch center, this is the main control for the, the manual locks to the Police Department front door and City Hall, this is an alarm panel, and then this is a heating and cooling alarm panel, along with, there's a little switch there for our roll-top door in our Sally Port. So this is our 911 equipment that we currently have, it's original to the Police Department since 1991, it's an AT&amp;T Lifeline 100. This is a, this equipment here is in the downstairs telephone equipment room, in the IT room in the basement. the basement. This was the monitor that came with it, with the old printer, and this is the face of the Lifeline 100. Again, this is equipment from 1991. This is our current 911 telephone. This is our ANI and ALI. So, ANI and ALI stands for Automatic Number Identifier, and ALI is Automatic Location Identifier. What happens when people call 911, the initial information that comes over this display is their phone number and any personal identification. With the cellphone technology, right now, we're capable of getting the cellphone tower address, so we can understand and know what tower they're hitting. We have to send for a Phase Two within the 911, which can also give us the longitude and latitude of the caller. That's the ALI part of it, is the location identifier. The first initial is the ANI, which is the number identifier. This piece of equipment back here is the TDD. Back in 1991, when this was called, it was the telecommunication device for deaf, but it's hearing impaired. That's what we use to communicate with the deaf. There's a paper roll that comes out and a keyboard, and it's basically a text machine over a phone line where you can communicate. The only main reason to be able to communicate is somebody else that has a TDD system in their house that's a deaf or hearing impaired. But in the technology nowadays, it's all about texting. So, with all this technology and all this antiquated technology, we always have a problem, and that problem is wires. This is underneath the desktop in our dispatch center. That's what it looks like. There is radio parts, there's towers, there's ground boxes, there's no more room to fit wires through here, but that's what it looks like. And with technology, there's wires, and then there's more wires. So, this is underneath our main primary dispatch center. This is basically what we have to use to be able to plug things in and make them work. So, that's what it looks like. So, part of the issues that we have right now is, again, our 911 equipment is original to 1991. It's no longer supported by AT&amp;T. For, if our, if any of our Lifeline 100 parts go down, we're basically beg, borrow, and steal parts from other Lifeline 100s. One of the main locations is DPD's old dispatch center, that has some of the old equipment still in it, and a lot of the AT&amp;T reps will go and raid that center to get parts for other departments that have Lifeline 100s. The city of Mylan has recently gone to an updated hardware, it's a Viper through AT&amp;T, and they've actually held on to their Lifeline 100s to assist other agencies that might need the equipment, as well as Pittsfield. So, our equipment right now doesn't support any of the next-generation 911 equipment. What is next generation? Well, I don't know if even anybody really knows what that means, because what's next generation? There's always going to be a generation to follow after that. Right now, the direction is VoIP calls, Voice Over IP, all the internet-based, so that's video streaming, photographs to 911, and texting to 911. They're trying to expand that, where everybody has cellphones. They'll be able to livestream video from any incident to our 911 centers. With that comes data, fiber, networking. I mean, there's a whole backbone that has to be built. Our voice recorder, our voice recorder is something that we use. It's a very vital piece of equipment, because it records all our 911 conversations, as well as our radio traffic. There are some redundancies built in with the Washtenaw County Radio Consortium, where the county actually has some recording devices that they also monitor, or at least record some other talk groups in Washtenaw County. But our voice recorder is antiquated and definitely out of date, and it's out of maintenance agreement, and they won't give us any extensions on it. It does require a constant maintenance with our IT. Chris Schonk gets alerts when this goes down, so that he can fix it and get it repaired, or at least try to get it going again, because it's vital. It records all our conversations within our administrative lines into dispatch, as well as our radio and our 911 calls. It fails regularly, and it's costly to repair, because it is out of maintenance. So, anytime we call somebody that needs help, we get paid per hour, kind of, as needed. It is difficult to redact. We deal with a lot of FOIA requests, the Freedom of Information Act. Part of the voice recorder is there certain information that has to be redacted. That voice recorder is very difficult to be able to do that without using old equipment and trying to redact or mute out information that's given in that. And it takes time to do that. Our security cameras within the police department itself were original to the police department in 2002, with some minor updates to specific cameras. The quality within, like, the recording area, it records, like, six or seven frames per second, or less than. So, it's sometimes when we get video, it's very hard to see, because the person jumps, because it's not recording all the frames within that. So, it does not meet the standard set for interviews and interrogation. The state came down and said, if you're going to interrogate a person for a felony, it has to be recorded in 1080p or High Definition. Our interview room does not record any audio, it only records video. So, at this point in time, our recording system doesn't meet that standard, as well as it doesn't record any audio in our lockup area. Again, this piece of equipment is definitely hard to redact during FOIAs as well. So, some of the design issues that we have with the technology, and some of the issues over the past 10-plus, since 2002, right now, it's tough to support new technology as it comes. There's some security issues that have been addressed over the years with an open dispatch. The noise level within the hallway, there's some sensitive information that we have to give over the radio, and that information can be heard even across the hall from some of the city employees that say, man, we hear everything that you guys say over there over the radio, and stuff like that. Well, there's some information that you can't put out there for the general public can hear it. And then vice versa, when there's council meetings and other meetings that go on within the city hall, it becomes difficult for the dispatcher to even hear the radio without blasting it as loud as it'll go. That's an officer safety concern that we kind of face with, and we've been able to manage it the best we can, but it is still an issue. And then with all those wires that you saw, when a piece of equipment comes down and you have to trace a wire where it goes, it becomes very difficult. Sometimes find myself on hands and knees underneath the counter, trying to just trace wires. So, the other aspect is the dispatcher health and wellness is kind of how I put it, with the ergonomic setup, with that main center island between the two dispatches. There's some of the door locks and some of the functions that are over on the secondary side. It's kind of difficult to always have to walk around and then come back, and then the radio going off, and dispatchers are kind of dancing around that center island often. They sit for a long period of time, and they're constantly looking up to a two-tier or a multi-tier monitors. So, they're constantly with their head up. They have to change positions quite a bit. With the, there are certain programs that are still on the city's desktop, which is actually behind the main console, so the dispatchers is constantly turning. And if they're, they're trying to use the radio at the same time they're looking at the desktop monitor, it becomes quite difficult for them to flip back and forth. There's a potential risk always to the head and neck and back injuries. The allergies, I put in there, because of all those wires that are on the ground, that's a mess, it's very hard to clean, and there's always dust and dirt, and, you know, the risk of increased allergies is always there. Plus, with the carpet that's in the dispatch and the high traffic, it's actually ripped right now, right near the main dispatch area. You know, it's faded. It's tough to clean, and even a good vacuum doesn't necessarily work all that well. So, to look to the future of the police department and the dispatch center specifically, you know, I was looking to be able to handle any technology that's coming, i.e. the next generation. I want to be able to handle all, any and all updated CAD. Clemis is updating their CAD system. That is supposed to have been rolled out, but there's been some technical issues on Clemis' side that they haven't pushed it out yet. But that will come in this next fiscal year, and we will have to update the CAD computers, because those have been in service since 2006, and they've only been shut off to reboot here and there. So, those towers have been original since 2006. So, most people replace their computers every year or two, and we've had those since 2006. So, again, the voice recorder and the camera. I want to be able to design and develop a dispatch center that will be here for longer than what this equipment has worked for us. Ergonomics, I always want to make sure that our employees are in a safe and healthy environment that reduces any risks to potential injuries. And again, our dispatch is a unique dispatch center. Most dispatch centers in Washtenaw County are tucked away, they're kind of out of the public eye. Some of the smaller dispatch centers aren't necessarily like that. You know, our dispatchers is right out front, and it'd be nice to have a nice professional, clean appearance for when public does come in. So, what could our dispatch look like? So, back a few years ago, myself and a team put together and contacted Zypex, which is a company that develops and designs dispatch centers. And we came up with, this is one of the dispatch models that the dispatch center could look like. It, again, still has the two dispatch centers. Instead of having a two-contact location within the police department, there's going to be, the design has just a one-pass-through ADA wheelchair accessible access, so that it's the same whether which position you're in or not. Recently, I've been able to locate another company that designs dispatch centers, and that's Gemtech, and this is their rendition. When they came up and drew this picture, they didn't do it on-site. I gave them the measurements and the design, like, the blueprint kind of measurements, and this is what they came up with. They didn't come out necessarily on-site, and that's why you see a wall there. But again, it might show the pass-through. Part of this proposal is a glass wall that is a separate, but keep it open, with a slide major open, so in the daytime it can stay open, but at nighttime for security, it would be closed, or could be closed, for noise and other things. That was more for a noise barrier than anything else. Again, this is, has some peninsulas and allows, has the two dispatch center, basically the same layout, a little different design as far as the equipment and, like, the material that they use. So, this design offers an ergonomic design with centralized equipment for both positions. It continues with a two-position dispatch console. Both of these designs have stand-up, sit-down capabilities, so they're on mechanical, so the dispatcher can actually stand and still work at their position. And they have the internal wire conduits, so all the wires kind of are on the backside of the wall and aren't seen and clean. It does have the ability for future technologies. You can change out monitors and hardwares, because, I'll go back, these are computer cabinets, so all the towers, you don't see are on the ground, they won't be on the ground. They'll actually be housed in computer towers that are heated, vented, temperature control to help that equipment last longer. And to change out any new technology, you're talking more hardware-software, and with the access panels, this would be much easier to be able to get to. That's what I mean by the accessibility and ability for future technologies. It does allow for expansion, if we ever did grow and have two dispatchers in at one time. Both setups are the same and allows for growth. It complies with the state and lean standards. It's professional layout and appearance. And I did put a note that the design team, when I did do this major, this design, was a few years ago, and it was a group effort between myself, Gene Bondi, Terry Seams, Don Terry, and Sandy Wood, who were the dispatchers at that time, when this design was created. So, the Emergency Communication Millage, which I'm sure everybody needs to know and wants to know about, what does it mean for the city of Saline? Basically, what it means is equipment. It's radio equipment, as well as 911 equipment. And what that equates to is, for the city of Saline, at this point in time, if we were to update our hardware and software for our 911 with an AT&amp;T-type solution, which they call it a Viper switch, you're looking at about $180,000 just for that switch, hardware, 911 phones, and the hardware and software that go on behind it. I did reach out to Phoenix, who actually built our building, to talk about the redo of that front counter and kind of moving the contact place, and they came back with that number of $26,470. The Gemtech, if you notice, that's $41,000 plus. That's a higher-quality material, it's a high-quality. I wanted to give you guys at least an idea of cheap versus expensive, as far as quality and warranty, and so that's the two discrepancies between the Zypex, which was $27,000 roughly. They use a different core material, less quality, so it's cheaper. So, I wanted to give you guys that reference. New high-wear 24-hour chairs. We've been doing some testing with Gemtech and doing some test and evaluation with some chairs developed and designed specifically for 24-hour use, and you're looking at almost $1,200 a chair. CAD computers, which is the Dell Clemis, that's pretty much a fixed cost from Dell, and Clemis basically tells us what we have. And that's that cost times two, because we have two positions. And then a new DSS is the company we use for our voice recorder. That's upfront of $3,656, but then there's an additional every-year service maintenance contract for almost $3,000 per year for the term of the contract. To redo our securities, I kind of deferred to Chris Schonk. He has recently done the rec centers, and he came back with an estimate of about $20,000. So, without the renewal of the millage that's been passed in Washtenaw County, if we were going to do this project right now, it would be roughly $278,000. And that's with no extra, that's per quotes that come in for nothing unforeseen. After renewal, the renewal, we're looking at about $98,000 roughly, with not much, with just basically the quotes. That's the number with the highlighted numbers added up together. The Emergency Communication Millage is going to basically give us the backbone for all 911, all the equipment, 911 phones, all the new connectivity with 911, because you're looking at fiber, you're looking at a whole network. It gets kind of complicated when it comes to how that all, but it, basically, for the city, we're going to get all the 911 equipment provided through the millage. So, that pretty much wraps it up for me, as far as the costs and kind of the breakdown and the need and the desire to plan for the future. I think we need to do this project now, sooner better than later, because we're kind of a, I don't want to say a ticking time bomb, but our equipment is old, it needs to get replaced, and I'd rather replace it before it breaks.
Thank you. Chief, did you want to add anything before we open up for questions or comments?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Mr. Gierbach, would you like to start?
Historical. Todd, didn't we have money that was set aside for, or that comes in for 911? That was part of a pool of dollars that we had at one point, besides the, just saying that we had reserved it aside. I think it was.
So, yes, we do, and that's typically been, we've used for various number of things between operations, as well as equipment, but the last several years, we've used personnel.
Ms. McClellan.
Just a quick question. In the redesign, are you moving the switches and the door stuff to, is that getting moved from its current location to a more, it seems to me that's not very secure.
Yes. So, within the design, they didn't, they can't draw the picture with all the little, the plan is, is to, this is a better image, just because I can get it, this cabinet isn't just going to be a shelf, it's going to be a cabinet, and it's going to house everything that was on the right side of the wall, and it's going to be like a false front, and all that electronic switches will be moved into this location right here. So, that way, it's accessible to both dispatchers. It'll be kind of tucked under it, so they're not bumping it all the time, but it will be there, moved off of that sidewall and put into the center, so it will be more secure.
More secure. And then you said that this design is not showing, but that there would be, that would be clear glass instead of.
Correct. I do want to maintain that open feel, but and yet still serve a purpose of a sound barrier. It's not going to be a ballistic glass. That's very, very costly. It'll just be almost like our old dispatch center down at, on Maple Street, we had a glass shield and then it was on a roller slider pass-through. So when it's closed, there's still a pass-through if it's after hours and there's some safety concerns, or you can open, unlock it and open it and then it's a one-on-face-to-face.
Okay. I think that was it for me.
Ms. Dillon.
First, with our current setup, do you ever have the second dispatch center on?
We use that as a backup. I have put other dispatchers in there for specific special events if we do foresee something busy, a major event comes in. Training, when we train dispatchers, they CTO, they have a training program. So the primary dispatcher monitors, can monitor them and that's when we use it the most.
Okay. But we don't foresee getting a second dispatcher to actually utilize that second station on a regular basis?
Correct.
And, I'm sorry, I had to. So then with all of the new equipment, we would become completely compliant as far as video, we'd be real-time, real audio and we'd have no issues with that?
Yes.
Fantastic. And just, and I know these are just, you know, mock-up drawings. It seems odd that the dispatcher has almost got its back. It's almost like, why are they sort of tucked into corners and not straight on?
That was a.
Sort of, especially if the door is on the side.
We went through lots of different renditions with the dispatch team and that's why I kept the dispatchers in that group because that was the main concern is that they wanted to still be able to see the front door. We put one position in front of the other position back away. We went through lots of different ideas before we came up with this one and they, the team thought that as you sit there and you're here, it's just, you're kind of just looking over your shoulder to see the front door. And the right side or the secondary side, if indeed this would be your secondary position, you, hopefully, they know that it's, nothing's going to be absolutely perfect in the space that we had, but this was the best design to make them see everything that comes on and comes in during that business time.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Seal.
I'm reasonably familiar with most of this operation and I commend Jay for bringing forward, I think, a reasonable proposal at what appears to be a reasonable price point. I think you did a good job and it reflects a lot of common practice now in many dispatch centers, I know certainly in Pittsfield where I'm working. I spent today working on the RFP to bring in a consultant to begin the process of buying an XGen 911 phone switch. So hopefully we can get that rolling pretty quickly and get that done. How long do you think it'll take you to get this done if the money is approved?
If the money's approved, I've already put some bugs into other dispatch centers' ears to help us through the transition. The county has set up with Mylan, Washtenaw County, they do have secondary backup positions. And because we share the same CAD as every dispatch in the county, we share the same report management system, we share the same report management or the radio system. All it is, is putting somebody in another dispatch center and having them log in and they're dispatching city of Saline. It's, the technical part is making sure the 911s go to the appropriate location. A lot of it's going to depend on the construction company, how soon they can come in. I would assume as long as everybody's available, start to finish to get everything in, maybe a couple of months at the longest. I think that would be reasonable because they're not going to completely remodel everything. They're moving the countertops around. They're trying to utilize what's there. That's what was nice about Phoenix is they know what we have, they built it so that they were, they would be able to use kind of what we have and get it done quickly.
Mr. Gerba.
How would they handle bidding on this anyways? Because if the county's going to pay for the majority of the equipment and then we have to do our construction, how would we, are we going to end up coordinating it at some point or to make sure it all works?
I think the contractors could come in and effectively do the physical changes required here. The 911 phone switch is virtually independent to whatever the physical structure looks like here. So they could proceed at their own pace once they, to get the work done here. And then the phone would just be the next normal step coming once the setup was in place here.
So how dependent are we on the county getting its act together? I mean, I'm thinking we've got to work with them to get the equipment. Are we ordering it and are they reimbursing us?
No, no. Right now, it looks like what we're probably going to try and do is buy a distributed phone switch for the entire county. Mylan has already purchased an updated, as Jay alluded to, a Viper phone switch. And we think that the system we're looking at would be able to integrate even an updated phone switch like that. But we would be looking at buying all the equipment that would be necessary to provide the 911 service here at Saline, at EMUPD, at Chelsea PD, at a number of the primaries, public safety answering points throughout the county, the dispatch centers.
Yeah, I just wanted to know how that coordination aspect goes along.
Yeah. It's going to be a system, we think right now, it's going to kind of exist in what they say in the cloud. So we won't have any of the physical equipment except for the telephone, but everything else will come to us through the wires from a centrally controlled area that's owned and operated by whichever company we contract with.
So the majority of this equipment won't be here on-site?
That's correct.
Okay. So we're doing away with a lot of the stuff that we have on the desk and so forth?
Right. And hopefully a lot of the expense too for providing the 911 phone trunks and things like that.
Mr. Seal, perhaps there are members of the audience who are not quite aware of why you are, you have so much expertise in this area. If you could just briefly explain that?
Well, there's several reasons. Number one, I formerly worked here at the, or at Saline, Ann Arbor too, at the Ann Arbor and Saline Police Departments. During that time, I was deeply involved in the technology. We helped bring all the Clemis stuff that Jay's talking about with the computerated dispatch, with the fingerprint identification system, with the photographic identification system here in the early 2000s. The county, as a county-wide effort, had all police departments come onboard that common platform. So it really enhanced our ability to do the kinds of things Jay's talking about. And that's if there was some reason that they had to shut down a dispatch center somewhere in the county, they could move to any other dispatch center, just log into the equipment there and continue to talk. The only difference is we'd have to work to switch the 911 phone trunks over so that they could be answered at another location. With the flip of a switch. This new system now, now my present job is to manage the entire countywide radio system for public safety. That's all police, fire, and EMS in the county. We've just renewed the operating millage that allows us to purchase and operate all this equipment throughout the county. And because we've already built the seven tower sites that were a large expense in our last millage, we looked about and then said this 911 phone system, NextGen 911, voice-over-IP, extremely complex, requires fiber optic network to really work well and to integrate with the state's ESI net. And we're getting way out there now in technology. But anyway, this thing is so complex that we said that it's worthwhile to undertake as a county-wide effort again, to have the county pay for it, to have the county on it, and to distribute it to all the dispatch centers in Washtenaw County. So thank goodness the voters on March, early March passed the millage renewal by an overwhelming majority. Thank you very much, everybody. And we now have the funds available to do that work. So we're trying to take it step by step. We've been working with Oakland County, who's just gone through a similar process to kind of plagiarize some of their requests for proposal and to hopefully draw on some of their expertise and further integrate the kind of service that we provide in Washtenaw County.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a clarification. So Saline essentially is going to be covering the cost of the actual physical construction things except for the voice recorder and the security cameras and the technology part in some of the physical things, but mostly the technology is coming from the millage.
The 911 phone switch, the trunks, the telephone.
But that's, yeah, that's all the, kind of the workings of it, but Saline is covering the physical construction of rearranging of the space and.
On this page here, this is what we have to pay for. The only thing we don't get from the millage and what the millage is covering is just 911 stuff. The Viper, a switch, the equipment, the hardware, the software, just for 911. So all the construction costs, all the voice recorders, we did look into doing a countywide voice recorder, but that got too complex and costly. So that didn't get covered and not covered under the millage. So the security cameras, everything else is on this page right here.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Gerard, the disadvantage of going last.
And particularly with me, and you all know, I can't say anything quickly. Well, we've got a couple of minutes, so just let me go over this real quick. I was advised by Mr. Campbell that the council would be discussing retiree health and potential changes to the plans that the retiree health that's provided to the city's retirees. So he asked me to come and sit and answer questions that came up as well as discuss what the city's desires are. There are a lot of things that you can do, there are some things you can't do, but it really depends on what you want to do with respect to making changes to retiree health here. I was provided over the weekend a proposal from David Hunsaker, who I believe is your insurance agent, who looks, has prepared a suggested change from current Blue Cross Shield, Community Blue plans and major medical plans to the Medicare Advantage Blue Care Network HMO plans. Under the terms that I see just listed on the sheet that I was provided, the approximate annual savings to Saline would be about $20,000. So given all the discussions we've had today about spending money, this is actually a discussion about potentially saving some money. You know, these type of things are doable. The law in the state of Michigan has become more flexible when it comes to making changes in retiree health. Of course, the more reasonable the change, the more likely it is to be found to be lawful. You know, if you were looking at significant cuts in benefits or enormous increases and the costs moved over to the retirees, obviously it becomes much more difficult. Also depends upon the terms of the contracts that employees went out on as well as with respect to non-union employees, the terms of their personnel policy manuals. But essentially what I came here today to do was to see what it is that the city wanted to do. And at that point in time, I can go back and take a look and give the city some opinions on whether or not it's legal. But from what I see here, if this is the extent of what the city is looking at doing, my initial impression is I don't see a problem with moving this direction. But I would need a little more backbone or a little more back information than one single page of just the cost. I'd like to see what the actual changes are. So that was my three minutes that I get because we have four minutes before the meeting starts. So any questions? By the way, has the, everybody on the council been given this?
Right. We got it just tonight.
Just tonight, okay. Well, I got it, I got a chance on Sunday to read it, so I'm a little bit as far as
Not so much a question, but a direction, you were running for direction. My perspective was, I know that other organizations and such have changed their.
Yes.
Benefits, but not to the point where it's removing the benefits, but they've done it underneath a different type of carrier so forth. We have so many different carriers which make significant costs to the city and looking at an extremely outstanding liability pension fund and benefits liability for the city and we need to start addressing some of these earlier than later. And the perspective is that I know working for a large organization and looking for other organizations, they've consolidated down, but they haven't necessarily changed all of the benefits aspects of it. Yeah, everybody's had more deductibles and things like that, but it's not so much eliminating them as providing the same comparable cost savings, but making it so that the program will last longer and we aren't going to jeopardize it for potential other employees.
And those are exactly the type of changes that have generally been approved by the courts. So if that's the direction that the council is going. Yeah, if that's, that's why I say if that's the direction the council ended up wanting to go, I don't think that that will be necessarily a problem.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Dillon.
I have a question, but I'm sure it's on the committee's vote committee agenda. About how many retirees does this city have? I believe we have, what do you think? I'm just trying to think how many we do on our OPEP spreadsheet. There's.
It's about a third or so of our total, being active and retirees.
It's over 20.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Seal.
Just so I understand, the effort here is to provide the same kinds of benefits with a different carrier or consolidate?
Solid. Right now, we offer a number of premium care programs that no other organization, no other organizations are offering anymore. But some of those aspects are to the point where it doesn't make sense that we are providing it in terms of a financial aspect, but also from the potential that any other organization or cities have been moving this way. It's not eliminating the benefits, but it's not making sure that we provide the Cadillac Care. It's making a balance that we need to provide.
Well, so we have nine different retiree contracts. They're all with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, but each one of those contracts were what was in place at the time that retiree, so we haven't made changes to that. And Blue Cross and Blue Shield no longer offers those packages. So for us to even try to change a carrier from Blue Cross and Blue Shield, we have not been able to do that because we have these, this number of retirees and then these multiple plans.
If I may add to that too, these, what we proposed, or what we've discussed, I should say not proposed, but discussed, is this would be for Medicare-eligible folks that the Advantage Program, which again is, would be a lateral move from these, as Mickey Joe talked about, these multiple individual plan designs that retirees are on. The, again, this is specifically for Medicare-eligible folks. So that, and as Mickey Joe also said, up to day, up to today, when we have gone out to look at other carriers, they've not wanted the retirees because as we mentioned, we've got a, not quite half, but between a third and a half of our, of our total cover, folks' coverage are retirees. Blue Cross won't just take the actives and then, but other folks won't carve out the retirees. So anyway, it's been difficult, but just recently, as of last week, when Mr. Hunsaker provided this information, it appears that there may be somebody new in, new in the game, if you will, that may be interested in retiree. So we will follow up with that and let you know.
Anyone else?
I would, I would just add from my own point of view, looking down the road, it's important to plan ahead for spiraling costs and to do that planning now while maintaining a good level of benefits is, I think, really important and prudent.
We can talk about this. Did we want to talk about the 20th? So in addition to meeting with the big three, we also need to sit down with you as council and discuss our capital improvement plan because while you just heard their, you know, their approach for this year's equipment, we also have to, we do capital improvements like streets and infrastructure. like streets and infrastructure and stuff like that. And we need to look at the capital improvement plan as a five-year document that we put together that decides what we spend this year, like on engineering and designing for our street projects, and then what we're going to do next year. And we need to have a good conversation about what our plans are for the next years as our funds and streets are, won't support going through with the design and engineering in following years. So we need to have a conversation about that. We need to discuss the water and sewer rate study to implement that into the new F-Watt fiscal year budget. And it sounds like we also want to follow up on this personal property update that I just handed out. So we would like to schedule, I know nobody likes to hear this, but we would like to schedule that tentative work meeting for Monday, May 20, April? May would be way too late. April 28.
That's next, next week, next Monday?
Next, next Thursday. The 28th, the 25th.
That's one week from today.
I didn't bring my calendar with me. I'm really sorry. It would be...
Yeah. So that would be one week from today.
Right. That's not a regular council meeting.
Right. That, the agenda, I'm sorry, and the schedule on the budget, schedule is a possible, if you may recall. So, yeah, we believe, staff is suggesting that council have that extra meeting.
And we don't have a meeting afterwards, so we would have time to discuss all of the elements that I mentioned. So, is 6:00 doable? Hey, we get to see you guys on next Monday. Thank you.
Okay. We come to the public comment portion of the meeting. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Please make it one. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name for the record. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, I would accept a motion to excuse the absence of Mayor Morrow.
Support.
It's been moved by Gearbox, second by Seal. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Move to adjourn the meeting 7:34 PM.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It's going to be Jack Seal.
Steve Gure.